And we are live on G E T V.
Okay, then let me press record.
And I see the flashing done, all right. On Tuesday, October 13th, 2020, I call this meeting of the Gardner School Committee to order pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20, and the governor's March 15th, 2020, order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the City of Gardner School Committee is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to or view this meeting while in progress may do so by watching Gardner Public Access Television, Gardner Educational Television, on Channel 8. This video will be uploaded to our city's YouTube page after its conclusion as well due to a conflict with another meeting that is currently being broadcasted live on the city's YouTube channel. We are unable to do so at this time. If despite our best efforts, we are not able to provide for a real-time access due to technical difficulties or other means, we will post a record of this meeting on the city's website as soon as we are able to do so. That being said, we will we will take note that all five, all six members of the Gardner School, all of us are here and present in our ready bunch here. I just saw someone pop up on my screen, so I had to recount there. And we will move forward to item C, the consent agenda. Is there a motion on the floor?
I move that we make sorry, I make a motion that we accept the constant agenda, consent agenda.
And I'll second that.
Motion made by Mrs. Hurst, seconded by Attorney Palavan. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. Again, as a reminder, since this meeting is being conducted under the executive order for remote participation, all votes have to be done via roll call vote. Mrs. Hurst?
Yes.
Mrs. Cormier?
Yeah.
Mr. Lefrenia?
Yes.
Mr. Abair? Mr. Abair, you are on mute. Yeah, we'll get back to you, Jim, in a second. Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Attorney Palavan?
Yes.
Mr. Abair, you're on mute, but a thumbs up or thumbs down?
You're still on mute? I'm clicking task.
Thank you. You're all good there, Jim. Thank you. I realize I skipped an item on the agenda. Is there anyone from the general public on this Zoom meeting who wish it to be heard? Seeing none, please email us if you have any question. Madam D on the agenda reports of our subcommittees, the COVID-19 ad hoc subcommittee. Attorney Palavan?
Yes, thank you. So the COVID-19 ad hoc subcommittee met for the first time on Friday, September 25th. We had an in-person meeting and a Zoom link was available for public participation. The first item on the agenda was the goals of the ad hoc committee, and we discussed what would be provided and, you know, how we'd provide accurate, updated information to the full committee regarding COVID-19 data to be transparent regarding the data. The second goal was to discuss remote and hybrid models and reviewing the model of instruction of delivery. The third goal is to review information from the school department's safety committee. And the fourth goal was to review compliance to the COVID guidance and regulations. We looked over the community level state map, which at that point Gardner was in the green. It was discussed how Desi is relying on that in regards to which instructional models and what the expectations are from that. It was noted that the areas around Gardner were all in the gray or unshaded color. And we, it was also noted that Athol had recently been in the yellow, but was now back to gray. Dr. Pellegrino had noted that Gardner had been in the green only one other time. And Mrs. Hurst, I commented that many communities around us had been consistently in the gray unshaded. We went over the daily dashboards for the state review, so obviously the state numbers. Mr. Schwartz had commented that it's always fluid with peaks and valleys. It was also noted that there were times where there are increases, but the increases have not been in our area in regards to positive tests. We also went over when there's been increases, but then plateaus again statewide. We then talked about the safety committee, and Mrs. Hurst had noted that she had attended the previous meeting and explained that the safety committee is meeting weekly. I also noted that I would be attending some of those meetings on the off weeks that Mrs. Hurst would not be attending. Dr. Pellegrino explained that Becky McCaffrey had been leading the committee and that there was a member from the teachers' union, the Board of Health, a teacher with a medical background, along with the facilities director, Mr. Anderson. Mrs. Hurst noted that discussions around the H track testing had been discussed at the meeting. And Dr. Pellegrino explained that HEPA air purifiers had been ordered for rooms with non-mechanical vented units such as the office spaces for guidance and, I believe, nursing. He explained that those types of purifiers are higher rated for purification due to the HEPA filter. Following that, we discussed the letter that had been received from Desi. It was discussed that the letter was instructing the school department that a date needed to be chosen for when some in-person learning would begin, since Gardner had low community spread of COVID. Dr. Pellegrino presented a possible timeline for return with a slow transition of different groups of the students returning to in-person instruction. He reported that all HVAC cleaning would be completed by September 29th with a few motors and other things being replaced soon after. It was discussed by Mrs. Hurst that she was not sure that some of the groups of students should be turning in isolation and not with the full group of students. Mrs. Cormier and I agreed. Joyce West commented that it might make sense to have the students return in a bigger group. And we talked about the survey that had gone out to parents. And at that time, there had been about 1,200 responses with about 78% saying that they were returned to the hybrid, with about 50% of them saying they would be using the busing. It was discussed by the committee that the date of October 26th made sense for the hybrid to begin. Dr. Pellegrino had thought there may be, need to be more time to complete some things and account for staff that weren't leave, but was agreeable to the date. There were discussions around the fact that 65 staff members were on leave due to health concerns or childcare concerns because of COVID. He explained he was working on daycare solutions. Scheduling was discussed, and the plans for the hybrid schedule, once it would begin, would have some timing changes from the current remote schedules. Dr. Pellegrino explained that the preschools were in person already at that time and were going well, along with some other high need students throughout the district. Mrs. Hurst then noted that Desi was asking for a date to be returned, determined for the hybrid to begin, and that sending the date of October 26th made sense. Mr. Schwartz had expressed some concern that the whole committee was not participating in the discussion, and obviously will be dealing with that piece tonight. I explained that the vote would be taken at the full committee regarding the return date of October 26th and would be a recommendation of the subcommittee. That was all agreed upon by the committee, and obviously now we'll be meeting next on Monday, October 26th, to see how things are going at that point.
You're on mute, Mike.
You're not the only one today, Jim. Thank you, Attorney Palavan. Are there any questions on that report from members of the school committee? Hearing none. Next item, the facilities subcommittee, Mr. Abair.
Facilities met on September 22nd. We had an update, Mr. Anderson, an issue on Morris Cleaning Services. The district has received some Clorox T360 disinfecting devices. The Morris staff has been going using their devices to disinfect the buildings. Mr. Anderson, Dr. Pellegrino, and Miss Yu had a meeting with Morris, and the site supervisors said there may be some need for additional staff when the student body gets back into the buildings. The district is going to purchase five additional disinfecting machines to meet with the needs. The district will work closely with Morris Cleaning Services to evaluate safety of the students and staff. The facilities team has done, did, done any work this offseason to welcome back the students to do everything possible to make a good transfer. We reviewed the guidelines for building ventilation for COVID-19. Unit ventilators, air handle, exhaust bins, and make-up air units. The high school has six units not working and be repaired. The others are being cleaned and tested. The middle school is fine. They've been cleaned and tested. The other, the other schools within the district, Elm Street, Waterford Street, and Helen Maystar have also been cleaned and tested. Miss Yu gave a presentation or opened a presentation for anybody that wanted to see how the 360 unit worked, and many people responded. The DPW has, as directed, they're going to help us with the lawn mowing and funds for transfer from the DPW to pay for the service. That is covered.
Thank you very much, Mr. Abair. Any questions or discussion topics on that report from the unit on the school committee? Seeing none, moving on to the finance subcommittee, Mr. Lefrenia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The finance committee met on October 5th. The committee went over the finance package for the month of September. We also had Ms. Courtney Dunn, grants manager, deliver a PowerPoint presentation on all the COVID-related grants, budget sheet. Following grants have been approved. We had $763,000, $63,196 for an Ethel grant. We had $538,650 for the COVID relief grant. We had $340,504 for the remote learning technology grant. We had $10,000 for a No Kid Hungry grant, $7,680 for summer food service program, and $4,000 for Project Bread grant. At some point, we're gonna have Ms. Dunn present this at a meeting. I didn't see it on this schedule today on this agenda.
I think it is.
Yep.
Is it?
Yes. Yes, it is. Yeah.
Okay, so we'll have that.
Do you stole her thunder?
Okay. Sorry. Yeah, let's see. And COVID planning for students' transportation has been very challenging. As of now, most high need students are back in the schools, but the district surveyed, survey ended last Friday, October 2nd. Miss Yu has forwarded all the responses, no busing, to NRT. NRT will send back the final routes and student cohorts this week. The principals will use the list from NRT to plan the hybrid model and contact parents. Also discussed was the NRT billing proposal with discount rates during COVID. Seems very reasonable. Pretty much the same proposal was given to most of the districts that they service. And also, we voted on a surplus of, surplus list of kitchen equipment, and the subcommittee proposed to bring that list or approval as surplus to the full committee. The equipment's beyond repair and pretty much has no monetary value. It's an old floor mixer, two slicers, some warmers, bread racks, another slicer, and some sneeze cards at Elm Street. And that should be up for later on in the meeting. That was it.
Any questions on the report? Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, policy subcommittee report, Mrs. Hurst.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We met on Friday, the 28th. We had one policy that we had to table for further review. We had eight that we had decided were reviewed, you know, we would have them reviewed as determined and no changes required. Those are policy BBE, unexpired term fulfillment, policy BCA, school committee member F6, policy BDA, school committee organizational meeting, policy BDB, school committee member officers, policy BDBA, duties of the chair, policy BDBB, duties of the vice chair, policy BDBC, duties of secretary, and policy BDBD, duties of finance officer. Most of the coverage in those particular ones comes through from the city charter, so there's really no need to change anything. We have one policy for first read tonight, five for second read, and two for removal.
Sorry, go ahead. I'm sorry.
So if there's no further discussion, I guess we could go into those.
Just gonna do that, so go ahead.
Okay, so for first reading, we have IHBHE for remote learning.
Any questions, comment, concern on item number 3184, first reading of policies? Again, it's for informational purposes for a vote at a later meeting.
So then we have item number 3185, second reading for policy ADC, tobacco products on school premises prohibited, JIC, alcohol, drugs, and tobacco, JIH, searches, searches and interrogations, JJA, student organization, and JRD, student photographs. So we need a motion.
Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion made by Attorney Palavan, seconded by Mrs. Cormier. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll put the matter to a vote. Mrs. Hurst?
Yes.
Attorney Palavan?
Yes.
Mrs. Cormier?
Yeah.
Mr. Lefrenia?
Yes.
Mr. Abair?
Yes.
And Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, item number 3186, and these are policies up for removal. Mrs. Hurst?
We have policy ACA, non-discrimination on basis of sex, and ACAB harassment. We have a policy AC, the non-discrimination, that includes information regarding both of these policies. So these policies would be considered redundant at this point. So we need a motion to remove those two policies.
Motion made by Mr. Abair.
Second.
Seconded by Attorney Palavan. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Mrs. Hurst?
Yes.
Attorney Palavan?
Yes.
Mrs. Cormier?
Yeah.
Mr. Lefrenia?
Yes.
Mr. Abair?
Yes.
And Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, item number 3187, update on remote learning. Dr. Pellegrino.
So the first thing I have to say is I have been more than thrilled. I don't even think I still describes how pleased I am with the, with the remote learning that we're providing for our students and our, the children of the community. Our staff have gone above and beyond. And I have to say, this all started with the planning teams at each school. Each school created their own plan, said what's best for our kids. How do we make sure we deliver an excellent education in this remote environment? Learning a lot from our, the things we did well last semester and the things that we struggled with. And I have to say, you know, the only feedback I've received is how strong it's going. And the other thing is, as we move to hybrid, that we continue the same quality of education for our students as we switch models. So I'm really excited that the vote program's been going so well. This has also been our opportunity, you know, staff, as you know, are in the buildings delivering the education. Now we, now that we have one-to-one devices, which, you know, Public Keep and the tech department, that whole team has just been doing wonderfully around that. You'll hear more about how Courtney Dunn's role in terms of securing grants and making sure that we have the funds that we've never had before. It's, you know, quite frankly, I have to say, the legislators, I think, got it right when it came to these grants, giving it to districts in need. And we've used those grants, I think, to great extent. And I think it's really helped in terms of making sure every kid not only gets a device, but an exceptional device in their hand, that the staff have what they need in their rooms. We've bought webcams, we purchased computers, they're on the way, I'm, to me, microphones, they're on the way. So I'm really excited at how well the program's going. And while that's going on, obviously, we're still gearing up to get more kids in our buildings. And I think it's important to note that remote learning, although we call it remote learning, remote learning's not remote learning for all. We do have students in our building, our highest need students are in our buildings. And our teachers have been wonderful with, our teachers and all the staff have all been great with our kids, making sure they have what they need. We have the adequate PPE. Whenever there's a need, I have to say Becky McCaffrey, leading the safety team, make sure people have what they need in their hands whenever they need it. So I have not heard any negative comments about how remote learning is going. I've only heard positive things about how strong it's going. I do think that from the spread that we've had, I've talked with school committee members at length at times, I do hear that parents still want their kids to be coming to our building. So I think that's extremely important. I'm glad to see them moving to that next phase of, to me, of hybrid learning. So I can't say enough good things. I don't know if there's feedback from others, but I'm really pleased with the, with the initiatives that Garden Public Schools has put forward.
Any questions, comments, or concerns for Dr. Pellegrino on that update? Thank you for all you're doing. Next item on the agenda, item number 3188, reopening schools to a hybrid model. There is a vote required on this. Dr. Pellegrino, do you want to explain this one first?
Yeah, just, you know, a couple of things. I know there's all, there's, you know, all kinds of questions about, you know, we just did videos, quite frankly. Courtney Dunn, our communications, grants, and she has about four other titles that go with her, with her job. Put together some movies of principals and Becky McCaffrey and myself, just talking with, just talking about how coming back to schools, we have to be very careful about making sure they're safe. We've done a lot in terms of protocols, making sure we have the PPE that we need, the equipment that teachers need, that students need, and I think we're ready for that. I know there've been a lot of questions about HVAC systems and whether or not they're up to par. We did do a thorough cleaning. So one of the things that set us back, as I think I've said before, is the cleaning at Gardner High School. We need to chemically clean the, the unit events that were at, that are at the Gardner High School. And because they were only running at about half their, their ability at that time. Now they're fully operational. So we've already done some preliminary testing, and I am thrilled that they're all working at capacity. So I expect to be well ready and have fully tested by a third party, top tier, well before people come back to school. So we're still working on all these, you know, little tick, you know, the tick list. But I'm really excited because this means kids are back in our building, and I have to say, I think our building's lonely. So I think this is a good time to be going to hybrid and applaud we're preparing and doing what we need to do to get there safely.
Is there a motion on the floor?
I move that we move to, I guess, move to the hybrid model starting October 26th. Is that what we need for a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Attorney Palavan, seconded by Mr. Abair. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Long time in common.
Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll put the matter to a vote. Mrs. Hurst?
Yes.
Attorney Palavan?
Yes.
Mrs. Cormier?
Yeah.
Mr. Lefrenia?
Yes.
Mr. Abair?
Yes.
And Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, item number 3189, revised school calendar 2020, 2021. Dr. Pellegrino.
Can we come back to that? I didn't download it. I gotta download it.
Okay, we'll come back to that one there. We'll mark that. Next item on the agenda, item number 3190, breakfast, lunch, and dinner program update.
So I can, I can do the breakfast, lunch, and dinner update. So again, we know, we know that we have, we know that we have a lot of families who are in need of food, and our programs have been running full, full-borne. They will continue to go at full pace when we go, when we move to hybrid. One of the questions has been, you know, will we continue to be able to provide free lunch to all participating students, whether they're in person or remote? And we just got, I got word today from Katrina, that our food service director, that the extension from USDA has now gone to June 30th. So for the rest of this year, we will continue to be able to provide free meals to our families. And as you know, we've been doing breakfast, lunch, and dinner for all of our, all of our families. Another piece to this is the boxes that we receive with, with wonderful, wonderful amounts of food. We've been doing that regularly. There are some glitches coming up that we're trying to overcome to make sure we continue that program as well. One of the things is the storage. As we, as we have kids coming into the building, we need to have some cold storage, so we're trying to work those things out. We're gonna do all we can to continue not only the breakfast, lunch, and dinner programs, but also that box program. So we're gonna do everything we can in our power to continue doing that. It does take up a lot of resources. We do have volunteers coming into the building to pass food out, but I will say it's, you know, the way we're able to do this is frankly, our facility staff is there unloading the boxes and getting them all stored. You know, there's upwards of 100 boxes that they're putting into cold storage, and then we have volunteers who actually pass it on the day of. And I know there's just never, there's never enough for the need that we have. And I think that's, that's the eye-opening piece, you know, to, to working this job. You just, you really, you really get to see that, that folks are in need and they're appreciative of, of what we're able to provide. So I'm pleased to be a part of that. I'm so glad that, you know, that the staff, you know, have been very supportive of that, as has the school committee. So I'm gonna do all I can to make sure that we continue that program as well.
Thank you very much, Dr. Pellegrino. Do you still need more time on the other one? We can.
Do, yeah, I just haven't had time to download yet. Give me a second.
Next item on the agenda, item number 3191, Massachusetts Association of School Committee Resolutions. Mr. Schwartz?
Yes. The annual event of the Mass Association of School Committees and the Mass Association of School Superintendents, where we're gonna be in a different mode this year. It starts on November 7th, and there're gonna be multiple sessions using online or Zoom. The business meeting, which is the resolutions part of it, and also the election of offices, will be done on the 7th in the afternoon after lunch. MASC will be, will soon to be publishing the applications if you want to participate into the, within, into the annual conference convention. So watch on the MASC website when those forms come available. If anyone's interested in participating, please apply. I've been going annually to this thing since I've been on the school committee. Now, the resolution, resolutions, what I will do is I'll, I'll read the resolution in the beginning of it, and then I'll, I'll bypass all of what I would call the gobbledygook and then read the therefore to be resolved. And then we'll ask for a vote on each one because rather than take them in the body, there may be something in there that we, we as a body don't want to support. And based on your vote is how I will vote when, when I get to the, when I participate in the convention. So Resolution 1, MCAS and high-stakes testing. It was submitted by the MASC Board of Directors. It was submitted by the MASC Board of Directors. Therefore, be it resolved that MASC rejects the call for the students of 2022 who missed their 10th grade in MCAS testing to be required to make it up during the 2020-2021 school year or ever. We demand those students be held harmless for not taking the MCAS, and that the graduation requirements shall be determined by locally-controlled voices of the school committee and school administration within the remaining graduation requirements of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Additionally, we reiterate our call for a moratorium on all high-stakes testing for the 2020-21 school year, so all students can benefit from their time being focused on direct instruction, and we urge the legislature to enact a moratorium on high-stakes testing for three years. So I need a motion to either approve or deny.
Is there a motion on the floor?
I move that we approve it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Attorney Palavan, seconded by Mr. Lefrenier. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I think it really should take place. The students in Gardner and everywhere are really going through a lot of turmoil with this new way of teaching, and so we ought to try to give them a break wherever we can. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none will put the matter to a vote. My Brady Buncher shifted a little bit here, so it may be a different order. Attorney Palavan?
Yes.
Mrs. Cormier?
Yes.
Mr. Lefrenier?
Yes.
Mr. Aver?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hurst?
Yes.
Motion carries. Go ahead, Mr. Schwartz.
Resolution 2, COVID-19 state funding, submitted by the MASC Board of Directors. Therefore, be it resolved that the state must guarantee every school district full reimbursement for whatever COVID-19 expenses are required to follow state mandates. We must ensure a statewide school reopening that is safe, responsible, and equitable. There can be no unfunded mandates for COVID-19. I move that we accept or deny this resolution.
Is there a motion on the floor?
I move that we accept it.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion made by Attorney Palavan, seconded by Mrs. Cormier. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Certainly needed. We've been spending a lot of money.
Is there any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Attorney Palavan?
Yes.
Mrs. Cormier?
Yes.
Mr. Lefrenier?
Yes.
Mr. Aver?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hurst?
Yes.
Motion carries. Mr. Schwartz?
Resolution 3, School Committee Anti-Racism Resolution, submitted by the MASC Board of Directors. Let me flip a page here. Therefore, be it resolved that all school committee districts in the Commonwealth should guarantee the racist practices are eradicated, and diversity, equity, and inclusion is embedded in practice for all our students, families, faculty, and staff. School committee members should ensure that school culture and that every district in the Commonwealth is anti-racist, and that acknowledges that all lives cannot matter until the Black Lives Matter. I move for either accept or deny this resolution.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Motion to accept.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion made by Mrs. Cormier, seconded by Mrs. Hurst. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none will put the matter to a vote. Attorney Palavan?
Yes.
Mrs. Cormier?
Yes.
Mr. Lefrenier?
Yes.
Mr. Aver?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hurst?
Yes.
Motion carries. Mr. Schwartz?
Resolution 4, Lowering the Voting Age for Municipal Elections, submitted by the MASC Board of Directors. Therefore, be it resolved that the sponsors call upon the Massachusetts Legislature to pass the Empower Act and take other means necessary to allow cities and towns to establish a minimum voting age of 16 years for all municipal elections. I might say, originally, I had reservations about this, because I do work in the polls as well. But what better opportunity to allow our younger students to participate in a real election, even though it's only a municipal election, not to be taken lightly? I take all elections very seriously. So it gives them an opportunity to actually practice the civics that are not taught in the school, and it's a real-life thing. When I see children come in with their parents, and to see what's going on, their eyes are wide open, wondering what's going on, and their parents take the time to explain it to them. So I think this is a valid, a valid resolution. I move to either accept or deny this resolution.
Is there a motion on the floor?
I move to accept it.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Motion made by Attorney Palavan, seconded by Mr. Aver. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none will put the matter to a vote. Attorney Palavan?
Yes.
Mrs. Cormier?
Yes.
Mr. Lefrenier?
Yes.
Mr. Aver?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hurst?
Yes.
Thank you.
Resolution 5, Supporting Increased Federal Support and Stimulus Funding for Public K-12 Education, submitted by the MASC Board of Directors. And therefore, be it resolved that MASC align with state superintendents of schools and urge the Massachusetts Congressional Delegation and state legislators to advocate for and approve additional education funding for our nation's public schools through the enactment of progressive tax legislation. Move to either accept or deny. There's a lot of wareses in this one. I'd be all night reading it, so that's why I didn't.
Is there any discussion on the motion? I mean, is there a motion on the floor? Excuse me.
Motion to accept.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Aver, seconded by Mrs. Cormier. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none will put the matter to a vote. Attorney Palavan?
Yes.
Mrs. Cormier?
Yes.
Mr. Lefrenier?
Yes.
Mr. Aver?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hurst?
Yes.
I do want to point out, just in case anyone pops in the middle in the meeting, that this is just resolutions that are being sent from MASC...
That's right.
...to the Department of Ed. These aren't actual votes that the school committee is taking to enact these, just in case anyone gets confused.
I forgot to elaborate on that as well, that really, these resolutions provide the agenda for MASC how to operate in the following year. So that's, it's really the light bulb of the organization.
Okay. So the last four, Mr. Schwartz, go ahead with number six.
Retention of Medicaid Revenue, submitted by the MASC Board of Directors. And this really affects the city of Gardner as well. Therefore, be it resolved that MASC urges the General Court to require that 100% of Medicaid reimbursements to cities and towns be provided in full amounts to the public schools of each municipality through a school district revolving account to underwrite the cost of providing an adequate education. I think we're lucky in the city of Gardner that the administrations that we've had have allowed the Medicaid revenues to be put into the school budget, but that doesn't necessarily mean that it would happen in the future. So I move that this resolution be either adopted or denied.
Is there a motion on the floor?
I'll move to accept that.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mrs. Hurst, seconded by Attorney Palavan. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I think a worthwhile resolution.
Hearing none will put the matter to a vote. Attorney Palavan?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz? Hearing no more, I should have said not hearing none. Attorney Palavan?
Yes.
Mrs. Cormier?
Yes.
Mr. Lefrenier?
Yes.
Mr. Aver?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hurst?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Number seven, Mr. Schwartz.
Resolution 7, Attempts by US DOE to Direct Funding to Private, Private Schools, submitted by the MASC Board of Directors. Therefore, be it resolved that MASC petition the Attorney General of Massachusetts to review and recommend to the Executive Office of Education and the Mass Department of Elementary Education to review the formal language of such statutes that determine the distribution of federal funds to benefit economically disadvantaged students, and further that the Attorney General provide legal guidance to state agencies in Massachusetts to implement such formulas based on actual language and legislative intent of the statute should there be in variance within the advisory issued by the United States Secretary of Education. That is a mouthful. I'm kind of leery on this one, but I move that we take action, either approve or disapprove this resolution.
Is there a motion on the floor?
I move that we approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made by Attorney Palavan, seconded by Mrs. Hurst. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none will put the matter to a vote. Attorney Palavan?
Yes.
Mrs. Cormier?
Yes.
Mr. Lefrenier?
Yes.
Mrs. Maybelle?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hurst?
Yes.
Number...
Resolution 8, Membership of School Committee Members on the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. Therefore, be it resolved that MASC submit to the General Court, propose the legislation that Mass General Law, Chapter 15, Section 1E, be revised as follows. Section 1E, there shall be in the Department of, of a Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, in this chapter called the Board, which shall consist of the Chairman of the Student Advisory Council, established under this section, the Secretary of Education, in this chapter called the Secretary or her designee, and nine members appointed by the Governor. The nine members appointed by the Governor shall consist of one representative of a labor organization selected by the Governor, and a list of three nominees provided by the Massachusetts State Labor Council, AFALCIO, one representative of business or industry selected by the Governor with a demonstrated commitment to education, one representative of parents of schoolchildren selected by the Governor from a list of three nominees provided by the Massachusetts Parent Teachers Association, one representative from a school committee from a list of three nominees provided by the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, and five additional members. I move for approval or disapproval of this resolution.
And we'll note on that, just because there's a lot of legalese in that, that the only thing that's being recommended in that resolution is adding a school committee member to the Board. All of the other people are already required under section to be a part of the Board of Education. Is there any motion on the floor?
Gives us a chance to, we're the big boys.
I move that we approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made by Attorney Palavan, seconded by Mrs. Cormier. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none will put the matter to a vote. Attorney Palavan?
Yes.
Mrs. Cormier?
Yes.
Mr. Lefrenier?
Yes.
Mr. Aver?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hurst?
Yes.
Resolution 9, Providing Equity for Sexual Orientation LGBTQ+ Students, Teachers, and Staff. Therefore, be it resolved that MASC file legislation and petition our federal legislative delegation to also file legislation which would have the effect of adding sexual orientation and gender identity to the list of protected classes in order to provide equity and support to our LGBTQ+ students, and to provide equity, I read that, to students, teachers, and staff, and petition our legislative delegation. Move to either accept or deny this resolution.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Our motion to accept.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion made by Mrs. Cormier, seconded by Mrs. Hurst. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none will put the matter to a vote. Attorney Palavan?
Yes.
Mrs. Cormier?
Yes.
Mr. Lefrenier?
Yes.
Mr. Aver?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hurst?
Yes.
Motion carries. Last one, Mr. Schwartz.
This one, in my mind, is a little screwed up, but I'll try to make the best of it as I can, and it deals with, oh, resolution 10, 10, relative to the monitoring of attendance of students during the pandemic, submitted by the MASC Board of Directors. And there is no, oh, yeah, there is a, therefore be it resolved that MASC advocate for legislation and regulation that protect the rights of parents to withhold their children from school for reasons of their health status or health risk, and further that MASC advocates for regulations that hold districts accountable for the attendance of students, provide appropriate exemptions for students who experience or require extended absences from school due to health-related issues or concerns due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and further, the MASC petition the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education to waive all accountability requirements regarding attendance for the 2020-2021 school year, and that such regulations exempt districts from sanctioned status on the basis of attendance when such absences are related to a public health crisis, including COVID-19. I move that this resolution be accepted or defeated.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Then I'll move the motion.
To...
To accept.
Motion made by Mr. Schwartz. Is there a second on the floor?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Attorney Palavan. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none will put the matter to a vote. The, Mrs. Cormier?
Yes.
Mr. Lefrenier?
Yes.
Mr. Aver?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Hurst?
Yes.
And Attorney Palavan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Motion carries. Uh, that is it for those resolutions. Again, just to clarify any confusion that people may have watching this. Those were not prepared by the Gardner School Committee, the Gardner School Department, nor the City of Gardner staff. It was all prepared by the Massachusetts Association of School Committees for their upcoming annual meeting. Those are not actual votes that are being taken that will actually decide something. They were a part of Gardner's voting process for their annual meeting in which they decide how they will do their advocacy efforts over the course of the next school year.
And just to reiterate, they, they do get rather contentious when it comes to the discussion of these resolutions. So it's, it's not a rubber stamp thing.
Uh, next item on the agenda. Dr. Pellegrino, are you all set to go back?
I am.
Item number 3189, revised school calendar for the 2020, 2021 school year.
Thank you. Um, so as you know, when we started this school year, they reduced the number of actual school days from 180 to 170 to allow us 10 days of professional development at the very beginning of the year. Um, the total of four days that we have for professional development, they used to start the year and we had one in the middle. We now have, we held in abeyance until we decided when we were going to go to hybrid. And what we wanted to do was put some of those days before we transitioned from remote learning to the hybrid model. After talking with the union and talking with staff and the school, um, various school committee members, we talked about instead of using all four as we transition from hybrid to, I'm sorry, from remote to hybrid, we decided to use only two of those days. So as you can see on this calendar, where it says the 26th, that will be the first day of the hybrid model of instruction will be October 26th. And then we put in the 22nd and 23rd as the two, as two days of professional development. So we can transition smoothly into the hybrid models. That will make sure last minute changes on rooms, making sure all the, all the little things that we have to do to make sure students are ready, we're ready for students to come back in the building are absolutely complete during that time. We'll also be talking with staff about, you know, any professional development that still needs to happen and training as people are coming in the building. So I'm happy about that. But that also means that we still have two additional days that we can use at some point during the year. So at some point, we're going to have another discussion about another change in, in the calendar of taking away, not taking away, I mean, putting in two professional development days instead of now that we, now we have, instead of a hun- we, right now, we have 172 school days, it looks like, on this calendar. But two of those days will be professional development days. And of course, you as a school committee have your prerogative as to which days you'll, you'll do. So this, if you have for a motion, this would be moving to have the 22nd and 23rd as professional development days instead of school days in transitioning into the hybrid learning model on the 26th of October.
Thank you, Dr. Pellegrino. There a, one, a motion on the floor, and then we'll go into discussion after that.
Motion, we accept the calendar as presented?
I'll shut up that.
Motion made by Mr. LaFreniere, seconded by Mr. Schwartz. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Um, I just wanted to say that I think it does make sense. It'll give two full days for the teachers and staff members to be able to organize things. And I think it's the best option at this point. And then we still have those two other professional development days that if we need to at some other point and, and switching any instructional pieces, or if we just see there's some issue coming up, we can use those as needed. So I think this makes sense.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none will put the matter to a vote. Second, while I get to everyone's pictures because of this. Attorney Palavan?
Yes.
Mrs. Cormier?
Yeah.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Abair?
Yes.
Mrs. Hurst?
Yes.
And Mr. LaFreniere?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is item number 3192, surplus kitchen equipment. Dr. Pellegrino.
Um, so for the surplus equipment?
I can take care of that if you want. We actually, the kitchen equipment that the facilities, uh, I'm sorry, the finance committee had discussed as surplus and, and agreed with it, sent it on to the full committee. And it basically is a flow mixer. We have like three slicers in there, some baker's racks, uh, sneeze guards and some warmers. Again, they have monetary value. And just taking up room. So I motion that we accept the surplus list as presented.
There is a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll shut up that.
Motion made by Mr. LaFreniere, seconded by Mr. Schwartz. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none will put the matter to a vote. Attorney Palavan?
Yes.
Cormier?
Yes.
Ray Bear?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hurst?
Yes, yes.
And Mr. LaFreniere? Motion carries. Item number 3193, COVID-related grants. Courtney Dunn.
Mark, if you would just share my presentation, thanks.
Yeah, does it sharing the presentation or is it?
Just click, um, present on the top right. That should be okay.
You were shared. You just needed to click another button after that.
Is this not sharing the? It keeps going back to the screen and I have no idea why.
It will let you just click present at the top on the right-hand side.
So Mark, you have to share your screen and do exactly what you just did. And then go up to the top right and then click the button that says present.
Okay, so maybe I shouldn't be using two screens. Let's see if I do this. Can everybody see that?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
If I click present, you can all see that?
Yep.
All right. Took me a little while to get there, my apologies.
You have to go back two slides, though. Okay, that should be awesome. So, um, as John mentioned earlier, I presented this to, this information to the finance subcommittee last Monday. And they had just asked me to give some information about the grants that we've received related to the coronavirus relief efforts. So the first one that we, that was, it's an entitlement grant. It's the ESSER fund that everyone's hearing so much about. This was used in many different ways and we actually already have to amend this grant. So the first use of this fund, fund was to help to maintain our current district staff and meet the unique needs of specialized populations like special education, mental behavioral health needs in our district. But on, based on some of the hires that we've made this year for those current positions, we actually had some savings there. So we'll have to amend some of that line, but we already have a plan to use some of that for the work done on the HVAC that Dr. Pellegrino mentioned earlier. Another use for this was the stipend that you see there, which was a stipend that we paid out before for data-driven instruction. And then, of course, MTRS, which is our requirement for the Retirement Association for our teachers, which will also be amended based on the amount above that will change. And then there was another piece here that needed to be amended based on federal guidelines that came down for the funding that we allocated toward Holy Family. That will actually be minimized by about $30,000. So, um, like I said, this will be amended, but they won't allow us to amend it until next month. So once it is, I can report that back to the committee directly. But like I said, we've already talked about using the savings for the HVAC that we're already doing the work on. So the next allocation was the $225 per student that's enrolled in our district, the coronavirus relief fund, school reopening money. So a lot of this was used for the technical pieces. So a lot of our technology to facilitate both remote and hybrid learning, including Chromebooks for our students and some of our staff. We've also had some remote learning platform costs like CSOW, which is something that our parents are using. Once our students enter the building, every volunteer that we have come in will need to do a touchless scan for their building entry. So we paid for some of that hardware. And they will only allow us to pay for the software subscriptions for the first half of the school year. So all of this stuff was prorated based on that information. We're also allotting some money for the non-reimbursable food expenses that we will incur during this time because we are trying to support our families as far as food service goes. We are also paying for trauma-informed training for our staff, a lot of cleaning materials. So the Clorox disinfecting machines that they mentioned earlier, those are being paid for out of a grant. Some other supplementary materials for remote learning, but also, um, you know, the cameras and microphones that our teachers will need, classroom signage for when our kids come back, hand washing stations in those classrooms that don't have sinks, the plexiglass partitions that you guys will see in offices as you enter our buildings, the cargo van that we have had purchased earlier in the summer as part of our summer food service program grant. The remainder of that will be put into here. So it's a lot of the remote learning plus hybrid model expenses will go into this grant. So as I mentioned before, in the coronavirus relief grant, we did get some money from that grant for the cost of Chromebooks. But the Remote Learning Technology Essentials grant was specifically for student Chromebooks and to try to get every district in Massachusetts, one-to-one. So we've been able to do that. We were only awarded based on our Chapter 70 percentage. So we actually, we needed to make, supplement this grant with the other coronavirus relief grant because we did not receive enough funding in this grant to make us wholly one-to-one. And then we did have some small food service grants, especially starting the summer off with, in the spring closure off with some of the shelf-stable meals when we didn't have the proper equipment to serve the fresh meals that we've been serving all summer. So we've been able to supplement all of the food service things that we needed to get a mobile meal service up and running through these grants here. This grant is an opportunity that we have. So we did apply for this. I actually, after the finance committee meeting, reached back out to the office that's putting this grant on to find out if they were going to continue awarding these on a rolling basis. And they still have 900 applications to review. I'm still really hopeful that we'll get this money. It's $85,000 to expand on our storage capacity because as Dr. Pellegrino mentioned earlier, we are having trouble continuing to store the fresh food that we're being supplied by the various places that we're getting it from. So we're getting it from growing places in Leominster. We have our backpack program, which obviously is not fresh food. But our Witsen's program is working so hard to supply our families with fresh and healthy food. And so as we move into this model where we have kids in the building and families outside of the building, it's really important that we have the capacity to meet the need. And so, um, our facilities director and our food service director think that this expansion on our storage capacity at Gardner High School is really the best way to go about that. So this, like I said, I'm, I'm really hopeful that we'll get this funding, but it has not been awarded yet. And then our last grant that I wanted to mention that we have received, it's not necessarily COVID-related, but I know that it will be really, really helpful as we go back into the school building. We actually were awarded this last spring. So, um, we have been in the process of installing 13 bottle filling stations across the schools in the district. And it's been to, the project was to provide a permanent solution to healthy and safe drinking water in our buildings. And so, um, this has been ongoing. And I think that we, we're pretty close, but I'm pretty sure, you know, we're almost finished with this project in the schools across the district. And will be by the time that school opens so that all kids will be able to bring water bottles to school and fill up fresh drinking water. I did want to mention, it's not in my slides, but yesterday we did get information about another food service-related grant to help. It's, it's 50, it's up to $50,000 of a grant to support community relations when it comes to food service. So a program like our backpack program where we work with Haywood and Teresa Thompson to provide non-perishable food to community members would be a really great use of funding like that. But we have not yet applied. It's not due until the end of the month. So I, I plan to meet with some of our stakeholders, including our food service department, just to see if we have other needs that we can fill through a grant like that. So these things are ongoing and they're coming in all the time. I just wanted to make sure that I kept you guys up to date on everything that I have. Does anybody have any questions?
I just want to add one thing about the SWIG grant, the School Water Improvement Grant. You know, this is, this is one of those instances where we, we were actually working on this earlier in the year. We had bought several, we purchased several different water filling stations. And this grant came along after we had purchased them. So at first we were upset, but then we realized this has been able to help us not only purchase the other bottle, bottle filling stations we needed, but it also helped with the installation. And this has made it so now every school will have water, water filling stations that are, that provide filtered water. You will fill up, um, you know, a thermos or a water jug or whatever, um, which is also, it is COVID-related in that you're not supposed to use the water fountain. So this is actually, believe it or not, really helping with, um, uh, safety around COVID, COVID-19. So I just wanted to mention that.
Any questions from any of the school committee members?
I just wanted to thank Courtney for all her work in doing this and keeping up with everything that's going on and just having the time to be able to inform us what's happening. And personally, I always thought water coolers in school were kind of yucky. So I'm really glad we have those.
Is there any other discussion, questions, comments, concerns from the school committee members?
The only comment that I have to make is Courtney's done a phenomenal job with grants. These are just a few of the grants that we've had about around COVID-19. But, you know, we've received a bar grants for, what, a few hundred thousand dollars that we've partnered with Pittsburgh, Leominster, and Winchton. Yet we're the lead district. And the reason we're the lead district is because we have a phenomenal grants writer. She's, she's, um, she's actually been able to secure a lot of grant funds. And she's paid her salary many times over with the addition. And I just haven't seen this many grants, even aside from the COVID, competitive grants for us to kick off the early college program, the, uh, career pathways programs. All of these different things get kickstarted a lot of times from grants. And really, you need somebody who keeps their eye on the ball, who has an attention to detail and who will follow through with, um, with vigor, even if when it comes to pushing the superintendent to make sure he does what he needs to do. So I just want to publicly thank Courtney for all the work that she's done because she's really helped move the district forward.
I couldn't agree more. You're welcome. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we'll move on. Item number 3194, HVAC update. Seeing none, we'll move on. Item number three, one, nine, four, HVAC update. Dr. Pellegrino.
Well, I, you know, um, just, you know, again, we've been going through the HVAC. And again, that's why I'm really glad we started out with remote. Thank you to the school committee for giving us enough time to make sure that we're able to make the repairs and open in a safe way when it comes to the hybrid. Um, you opening up to the hybrid model. Um, you know, frankly, um, I'm really pleased with the results of the, the HVAC system. Uh, throughout, we've repaired a lot of different things that, um, that were operating, but not operating to the, to the full capacity. And that's really what this is about, making sure that we're on top. And then once you're in shape, it's much easier to stay in shape. So we're coming up with our maintenance plan to, again, we're going to be replacing our filters four times a year, not two times a year. We'll make sure that we're on top of cleaning these things, but also chemically cleaning them when we need to. Not waiting, not waiting till there's a crisis and having to, um, follow through because the last thing you want is when you hit a crisis to have things like that not ready to go. So I couldn't, I could be proud of Wayne and his, Wayne Anderson and his team, his, uh, his team. And again, tops here, I thank them for, you know, their hard work in terms of testing. They're in this week. Making sure that's every HVAC is working to capacity.
Any questions, comments, concerns from the school committee? Thank you very much. Uh, moving on, item number three, one, nine, five, curriculum coordinator update. Dr. Gogan. Right?
Yeah, typically, um, you know, I know you've read the reports. Um, so if you have comments on the, um, the curriculum coordinator's report, or if you have questions for, um, Dr. Gogan, um, this is the time.
I just want to say she did a fantastic job in her report. Obviously she works just as hard as you do. Uh, Dr. Pellegrino, there's a, there's a lot of positive things in her report. So I thank her for her hard work.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments, concerns? If not, moving on. Thank you, Dr. Gogan. Excellent work. Uh, item number three, one, nine, six, special education update. Is there any questions, comments, concerns from the school committee members on the update that is in your packet?
Just another, uh, fantastic report of a very busy bee in the Gardner School Administrative Office on special education. It's certainly a proof here that everybody in the whole district works very hard for the students in Gardner. Thank you.
Thank you. And any other discussion on that item? Moving on, item number three, one, nine, seven, grants administrators update. Is there any questions, comments, concerns about the information that is in your packet?
Great job, Courtney.
All right, moving on. Item number three, one, nine, eight, MSBA new building project. Dr. Pellegrino.
Um, so we've actually taken, um, now a, um, a survey about the, the school name. And right now, and of course I'm trying to pull up my results and now I've lost them. Um. This is not my night.
It was forty-five responses.
Thank you. There were forty-five responses. Um, most of the responses were one of two things. They were either Gardner, um, Gardner Elementary School or Chair City Elementary School. Um, the votes on Facebook as well, I think confirmed those two choices. Is that, am I correct in saying that, Courtney?
Yes.
Um, so ultimately, uh, it's, it's, um, going to be one of those two. And I'll be putting those two, um, to the next stage, which is I will be surveying Waterville Street School and Elm Street School, um, for their feedback. Um, the only outlier that I saw was Hawk Elementary School. Um, but, um, you know, so that was just, that was just one vote for that. But I do think it is time that we move away from names. I think it makes a lot of sense that, um, you know, Gardner Elementary School or Chair City Elementary School reflects Gardner and, um, who we are. So, um, I'm actually pleased with the results of the survey. I think it aligns with, uh, the direction we should go. That's about it.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments, concerns on that agenda item from the members of the school committee?
Um, I just wanted to say we are having a school building committee meeting tomorrow.
That's right. And that will be live on YouTube. Uh, any other questions, comments, concerns? If not, moving on. I don't believe we have any communications this evening. So we'll move on to item G, final comments of the school committee. Mrs. Hurst?
I don't really have a whole lot to say tonight other than, um, just thank you to everybody, um, who's presented and, and, and everybody who's behind the scenes that's just doing so much work to, um, get everything, you know, up to, up to speed for our kids to get back to school. Bottom line is it's all about the kids. Um, you know, we represent them. We're here for them. And, um, I, um, I, I'm just really happy to work with such great people.
Thank you very much. Mr. LaFreniere?
Um, just wanted to echo what everyone else said to thank Courtney for all the hard work. Um, without those grants, we, I don't know. It's nice to see that she's just on top of it. Doing an incredible job. Uh, so thank you, Courtney. That's it.
Mr. Schwartz?
I've said it all already. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Abar?
Um, again, thanks to the administration, the staff, the teachers, parents and student body for getting us to this particular point.
Coke, you froze. We welcome back to you, Mr. Abar. Mrs. Cormier?
Um, same type of thing everybody else has said. I'm just appreciative.
Anything toward that, uh, affirmingly believes in that stuff, then vote, okay? Because a lot of these things will never come to fruition if you don't put pressure on the people that can't put them to fruition. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Abar. Mrs. Cormier?
Um, just want to say that I'm appreciative of the patience from the community as well. You know, we, I know it's been frustrating for some people in just not knowing what's going on. Um, I can just assure you that all the people who've spoken tonight, as well as many, many more, have been working hard behind the scenes to make sure we do the right thing for the kids. Um, and we're headed down that road. So wanted to thank everybody for their patience as we get to this point. And I'm looking forward to seeing kids in the school on the twenty-sixth.
Thank you very much. Attorney Palavan?
Um, yeah, I'm very excited that we're moving towards the hybrid model. I know my children are very anxious to get back into school as well. And I also wanted to mention, I know we talked about this earlier with the remote learning, but, um, I really think that the staff has done an excellent job with the remote learning piece at this point. And, um, I'm just amazed at how much they've been able to accomplish through remote learning. And that's it.
Thank you very much. I do have a couple of stuff on my end. Again, uh, thank you for those who tuned in on G E T V to watch this evening meeting. Uh, while we did have a conflict with our YouTube page, uh, a full recording of this meeting will be posted to the city's YouTube page. Uh, once we conclude this section of the agenda here. Um, so if you missed it, the link will be up as soon as we can upload it to that there. I know there were people who, uh, were sending me emails, text messages and Facebook messages saying it's normally on YouTube. It's not on YouTube. We understand. Uh, there was a conflict. Uh, our YouTube doesn't have the capacity to live stream two items at once and it's still live streaming a meeting from earlier today. Uh, so that conflict makes me feel we were unable to go live on YouTube, but we met the open meeting law requirements by going live on G E T V. With that said, I want to congratulate Andrew from G E T V on his first meeting, running a, uh, meeting like this on G E T V. So Andrew, thank you much, uh, very much for, uh, what you're doing. Uh, I've had a couple of questions about city hall reopening and how that relates to meetings like this and being in person versus being on Zoom and so on from there. City Hall is reopening tomorrow, uh, to the public. However, um, we are currently working with our building department, our custodial staff, a couple of other people to make sure that we can still, if we were to meet, we'd be at a proper social distance. We cannot have an in-person public meeting unless we are able to be six feet apart from each other and have microphones pick us all up and are able to still stream those meetings live for the members of the public who just are not comfortable being out in person yet. Uh, so that is why we continue to meet on Zoom, even though we are opening up our schools again and we are opening up our city hall again, is because we are, don't have the technological capacity nor the, uh, location that has the technological capacity right now to fit a socially distant meeting of the school committee that can also be live in an area that you can hear things well, where the acoustics work with it. And, uh, members of the public who aren't comfortable with being out into the public, even with a mask, are able to still catch all of the proceedings just like we do now with G E T V and YouTube. So once we get further information on that, we'll send that out. It's not just us. It's all of our other elected boards and our other appointed boards and commissions as well. Uh, G E T V is going and my office kicked off a reading, uh, program that we're going to call it. So I, uh, last week sat with a member of G E T V and got to film reading a book to our kids and students in the community. Uh, this is something that we're looking to make a regular thing where every so often we're releasing a new video of someone else from the community reading a book to our children. Uh, and those will be available on the city's YouTube page for parents to pull up as they see fit. We'll share those wherever, uh, it's needed. Uh, hopefully it's up sometime this week. It's about Elmo's first day back to school after he's been remote learning and going back into an in-person situation, uh, wearing his mask and keeping his special distance and so on from there. So hopefully that's up and we expect that to be up before the students go back into school. Uh, and then the last thing I want to say is with regard to a couple of the M A S C resolutions. Uh, I said this at the beginning when I was first elected, uh, as mayor and the charter, my role is to chair the meeting and break a tie, not to participate in discussions nor vote on matters that don't have a tie. I do have a couple of differences of opinion on a couple of the resolutions that were there. But I at least want to reiterate my commitment to making sure that our school districts remain, um, up to par when it comes to diversity, inclusion and equity, uh, that we should have a local control with our officials in Boston to make sure that the us who are on the ground, working at the local level are a part of the discussions that are being made out, uh, east. And, um, I am also in favor of the, um, moratorium on our high stake. Um, I, I just feel like it's been too much on our students this past year to hold something over their head like that and add to the stress levels that they're already going through. Uh, but that's just my personal opinion on a couple of those matters. Again, there's some that I have a difference of opinion of, but that's uh, not here or there because my job is just to chair the meeting at that point. Uh, but with that said, um, I'll now entertain a motion to go into executive session for exemption of the open meeting law chap, general laws, chapter thirty. Uh, under exemption number three, to discuss the strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body and the chair so declares only to come back into open session for the purposes of adjournment only. Is there a motion on the floor?
So move.
With motion made by Mr. Schwartz, signed by Attorney Palavan. Uh, this would require a roll call vote in a meeting anyway, but since we're Zoom, we're going to do that anyway. Attorney Palavan?
Yes.
Mrs. Cormier?
Yes.
Mr. Abar?
Yeah.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. LaFreniere? You're on mute, Mr. LaFreniere.
Yes.
And Mrs. Hurst?
Yes.
At this time, we will cut the connection to G E T V and our recording. This is where the meeting will end when it goes up on YouTube and we will only, uh, take a vote to come back into a, uh, open session of the school committee solely to adjourn and which no other discussion or vote can be taken at that point. So once we get confirmation that the recording has ended and the E T V has ended as well, we will then commence with the executive session only to vote to adjourn afterwards. Thank you.